I'd like to call the council meeting to order. Would you stand and join us in prayer? Pastor Brian Herring will lead us in prayer.
My gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. Lord, we ask that you would bless these men and women as they decide the decisions that's over our great town. Lord, we pray that you give them wisdom and direction. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
James Harrison.
Present.
Joe Crockett.
Present.
Dan Sherrill.
Present.
Johnny Savage.
Present.
Floyd Baltimore.
Present.
Wendell Stevens.
Present.
Dave Fitton.
Present.
Shannon Stone.
Present.
And a quorum. In your packets, you have the minutes from the October 25th council meeting and the November 8th special call council meeting.
Motion to approve. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Department reports. Mark, did you want to address the fire truck purchase at all or need to discuss that?
Yeah. We need to remember not about the bidding process, about how we're purchasing that. We just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what was going on on that. We will be purchasing it through a, basically a co-op, high purchase program is what we're looking at doing. That, because the bidding process on this is so hard to do because we're trying to find a truck out there that we need, not bid it, build a truck to specs and go up for bids. So, that was my suggestions on that. I don't know if we talked about opening it up.
Well, that spec sheet you gave us last week showed several different type of units. Some of them met the specs and some didn't, referring to?
Well, that and just the overall bidding process and the rules for bidding and stuff like that. We're actually buying it through a, they call it HEAC. It's a, how do you explain it from the beginning? It's a buying cooperative. It's kind of like a state contract.
The information provided to me is that Mark is utilizing a company that has registered and been approved with the state procurement office and qualifies under code section 1450-8104-2. And since you all have previously approved the expenditure of it, it's my conclusion that no action is required for us to bypass the competitive bidding under these circumstances. And Jeff, I'll provide you that information so that you can put that in the minutes and have it on record.
And one primary reason for not getting a truck built was just basically getting a truck on the street faster because it takes six months for us to get one built.
I mean, we're still looking to find what we need. It may take, especially with the holidays, it'll be in the January anyway, the time of getting here.
But it'll be a truck that's already built?
Yes, sir. For those information, we are looking at one and should we go with it, you'll be pleased to know that we will be on the budget by probably 35, 40,000 should we go with this.
Is this not the one that had a thousand gallon tank on it? Did we look at this, we discussed before?
Actually, yes, it is.
Same as same year?
I believe so, yes. We've looked at so many that, they're all running together. And what has happened is, is actually we had one that had them bring us to look at and they sold it that day. So, we're just back to looking again, so.
Is there anything that's not compatible? I mean, garage door sizes, I know we've had that with ladder truck. All the systems will work when it comes in and goes up?
Yes.
No additional expenses where you're going?
That's where I'm headed.
Radios and?
Yes, it will be, it will be, it will fit the station. Actually, the wheelbase we're looking at is actually shorter than the truck it would be replacing.
So, it'll get around town better.
Good.
Do other department heads have anything to report?
Yes, I have something that I hope is just a quick pop-up. The Housing Authorities Board has invited Tommy Hudson to become the fifth member of that board. I think he's especially well qualified to help us move ahead and no appointment can be made without the council's approval. So, I'm asking you to say grace.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve.
Yeah, you, well, in your package, you've got a resolution. Is that what your?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution for, okay.
If you want to actually act on that resolution.
Since we have it, we're just as well.
You have a motion to adopt resolution to approve Tommy Hudson to the Housing Authority Commission. Do you have a second? Have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Ordinances and resolutions. We have a chicken ordinance that's been read twice.
We've got a chicken ordinance that's been read twice.
Going anywhere with tonight with that guys or?
I have one on the chicken ordinance. I can't remember who it is exactly. Need to look for it, but there is a statement in here that they can build their coops in the backyard or side yard, and I'd like to eliminate the side yard option so they can only build their coops in the backyards to the side yards. It's less, it's less visual when you're driving down the street if it's in the backyard than it is in the side yard.
Of course, some lots maybe, you know, they don't have a backyard.
If they don't have a backyard, they don't have a side yard either.
My backyard is beside, side yard too. Because I'm on the corner.
Your backyard is behind your house.
I know, but it's also on the side.
Your side yard is on the side of your house. You don't have a backyard on the side and back.
Floyd, this was your language and your.
I know, I know. I know exactly, and I had it highlighted the last time and I didn't bring it up.
If you don't like it, you can vote against it.
But we can still change it of what you've told me. We can always omit or add.
You want to make a motion, but on a third reading.
By title only?
Second.
Have a motion to place your ordinance on, a motion and a second to place your ordinance on its third reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance replacing Harrison City Code Section 6.08.02, other animals and fowl to regulate chickens and provide penalties for violators.
Do you have a motion to adopt?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Roll call.
Our motion to adopt in second. Request for roll call vote.
No.
Joe Crockett.
Yes.
Dan Sherrill.
Yes.
Johnny Savage.
No.
Floyd Baltimore.
Yes.
Wendell Stevens.
Yes.
Dave Fitton.
Yes.
Shannon Stone.
Yes.
Six to two, motion passed. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to enact the emergency clause.
We don't. We don't. Probably. We have, with the action of this council, we have gone to a 30-day emergency clause. Of course, if it's your pleasure to.
If we need it before 30 days, we could do that, but.
People may want chickens tomorrow. Before Christmas anyway. Thanksgiving.
In your packet, you also have solid waste ordinance in front of you that gives us authority to enter into the contract with the new contractor for the solid waste payment?
It's basically just modifying our previous ordinance to.
To provide for the new contractor in the new contract? We've covered the milk service committee.
Yeah, there's one other issue on that I forgot to discuss, and I've got to find it again. I have too many papers.
This update we need to do tonight.
We just need to have it in effect by January 1st.
We need to have this in effect by January 1st.
Okay. If it's one reading tonight, it would be next month looking at.
Two, three and adoption.
And emergency clause.
And emergency clause. Are we going to have a quorum for emergency?
You can do three readings tonight and adopt it, and then you wouldn't need the emergency clause, or you can do one or two readings tonight and a third reading on the 27th of December and an adoption of emergency clause.
Had to be on again.
First reading by title only.
I'd like to discuss something first. And here again, this is probably just semantics, but it doesn't, the way it's read, the way I read it anyways, which may not be the way it should be read, but it indicates that this is not a bid process for, where the bids are sealed bid process. You almost can read it like the council could negotiate with a hall of, is that?
Where does it say that?
It doesn't. That's what I'm saying. The way it reads, it doesn't read that you have to have, to be a closed bidding process on this, on the contract. And that's what I'm saying. Do we need to spell out that it has to be a closed bid process to make sure that this is correct? Says.
The bid process was completed.
The bid process is done.
Completed. This is just.
Yeah, I know.
To replace the current ordinance.
True. Wade and I spent some time this afternoon re-looking at this, and of course, it's fairly generic. We already have our contract with inland services, and it's very specific. It was the result of bidding.
But here again.
I think by the codes that are in existence, even without saying that if there is another contract and if it is negotiated, it would, to be approved, it would still have to meet competitive bidding requirements because of the city's contract laws that were under. So, that.
It does specifically, specifically say that contract awards will be based on responsibility to contract most price.
Most price, yeah.
And the contractors have done.
I agree, and I read that, but it doesn't say that this is a sealed bid process.
If, you know, I think we can look at some more details.
Arkansas State law pretty much specifies a sealed bid process.
Right. Before our, before our next reading, our next meeting on it, we, you know, any topics that you or anyone has, we, you know, I'm sure Wade and I could look at it.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is back to some statements were made before the last election. They thought Methuen should have got this contract, and evidently the people didn't realize that it's a bidding process that you have to go through to do this, and the clearer we have anything that we do that goes before the public, then they'll understand it better, and there won't be these comments that somebody should have got the contract before they had it before or something like that. It's just, just trying to keep things as clear as possible when it comes to dealing with the public.
I'll make a second on Dave's motion.
A motion in the second to place your ordinance on its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance to totally replace chapter 5.04 solid waste collection of the Harrison City Code.
I would like to see us wait on this. If, man, you could add that in contracts and under B there, I'd say. If you want to just say, well, enter into like a sealed bid or whatever, I don't have a problem with it, but.
Well, I think everyone was kind of ready to leave it on just its first reading tonight, so. And any other things, if you want to make those suggestions, we would want to give them attention.
We have Arkansas Energy Code discussion. Wade, did you have something you wanted to present on that?
Yeah, we talked last meeting about this. I did talk to the Arkansas Energy Office. There are no set penalties or punishments that are dealt about the code. You know, they are hoping to see everybody adopt the code eventually. As we talked a little bit about during the committee meeting, we're not geared up to enforce this code right now. We'd have to get some additional standards, which I just have to buy them. At least three different new standards that we have to get, and they're not cheap. My recommendation right now would be to just say that we'll write a letter to our concerned energy office as of New Year, saying we've not adopted it yet so that we can look into it and get ourselves more prepared with eventual plan of going ahead and adopting it. Because it does, over the life of a homeownership, of early ownership, it does lower the cost, even though it does cost a little bit more on the front end to do the extra. It boils down a lot to insulation and.
Windows.
Windows. It's really the biggest, biggest money deal. We're talking about the portion of the code. So, I'm not, I guess, right now, I don't know if there's really any action that I'm looking for as far as moving on this other than maybe just some general idea of whether the council, or whether we think we might want to eventually go down this road so I can buy the book. But it'll probably cost about $300, $400 just to buy the book.
Does that go with all the rest of the code books either?
Yeah.
And what goes along with that, we're going to have to, there will be, the new code next year, so we'll have to, yeah. We'll buy those code books. Did you mention last time that there were certain communities that already indicated that they weren't going to go along with it?
Some that aren't going to go along with it initially. Now, they may change their mind. Top two, one that has gone along with it already, but not real thrilled with it. Some communities are already adopting standards in excess of our concerned energy code. So, it really boils down to what's best for each individual community. And that's the only thing that the Energy Office says.
I was just curious as to what rationale they were using for, you know, not adopting?
Increasing the upfront costs of homeownership.
That was the major.
You haven't had any feedback from any contractors or anything like that? You probably really don't know about it.
No, I mean, we didn't know about it until last month. It was just something that, we found out about it because of a municipal email that went out.
Something we might do is visit with the Home Builders Association at their next meeting or something and see what their attitude is towards it.
Just from talking to the Energy Office, they're not trying to force people. They understand people need to take a moment to look at it, make sure what's right for their community.
I'd say we'd leave it hanging.
Is there any way in your conversation then to adopt portions of it, not other portions of it?
We can do that, but we'd still have to explain why we're not in complete compliance.
Okay.
Yep. We discussed the bidding requirement on the fire truck purchase. Highway 43 annex ordinance, we had a gentleman, his insurance agent come to us asking to be annexed because it was going to save him considerably on his homeowner's insurance. And Van has prepared all the documentation and.
That was Highway 43 East.
Yes, we have an ordinance here prepared and. There are actually two tracks that we did together. They are side by side. They're fairly small tracks. I think the major address is 1930 Highway 43 East. It did meet all the requirements of touching existing city boundary, and the property owners voluntarily asked to be annexed. I have published this in the Boone County or the Harrison Daily Times newspaper for the required publication times. It has been approved by the county. County judge approved it. It's at the point of needing council approval, and then in about two weeks, the final approval will be made by the county judge, and we should have them annexed into the city if it's your pleasure to approve the ordinance.
Motion to place it on its first reading by title only.
Second. Have a motion in the second to place your ordinance on its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance annexing the here and after described lands to the territory of the city of Harrison, Boone County, Arkansas.
Should we need to move this forward or?
I thought we discussed this last time.
I think he would like.
He would like to have it done.
We have his insurance agent here in the audience.
Generally, we do. There usually is not any requirement, you know, issue to spread it out over time, but it's still whatever council.
He's paying, I don't know, $800 a year more in insurance now. Higher than that? Okay. A lot more in insurance now until he gets annexed, so.
So, there is somebody here representing?
Yeah, his insurance agent.
And if we did pass it tonight, it's still got the 30-day waiting period under ordinance rules, so.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and put it on the second and third reading by title only.
Second. A motion in the second to suspend the rules, place your ordinance on its second and third reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance annexing the here and after described lands to the territory of the city of Harrison, Boone County, Arkansas.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Have a motion to adopt in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a resolution for group health benefits for certain employees that the municipal league had asked us to prepare, and Van had some discussion with them and did prepare the resolution, I believe.
That's correct.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. A motion to adopt the resolution in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You're pretty good. Man, before we get too far along, I would like for you, if you would, could you go back to committees?
Sure.
To report.
You got Community Environment Services and Welfare.
I do have something. I didn't want to forget.
All right.
We passed through committee on our special care fund. Of course, everybody knows we have to move that out of Merrill Lynch, and I'd like to make a motion this time to authorize the city finance director to move our special care fund from Merrill Lynch to Wells Fargo.
Second. Second. Have a motion in the second to accept Wells Fargo as the new agent for our cemetery fund. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And we do have representatives, Mr. Chris, Mr. Moos here. If you have any questions for him. Oh, you, you raising your hand?
No.
Oh, okay. That's all I have, man.
I think the committee and the finance director did a good job on that.
Yeah.
Not an easy thing to decide.
It's not something we want to do, I know of that.
Finance committee?
We decided that we're not ready to bring it. We're talking about the budget.
Internal affairs.
The only thing that's following us is the ordinance that just passed.
Public safety. Public works and transportation.
Got a report, man.
Resources and policy.
I'll report, man.
All right. We have a permission, a permission agreement for community garden plots. Deeser and Cindy Moore, I believe. Are you ready with that again, or have we prepared documents for that, Van?
The agreements are in the packets, I was hoping.
Have you changed those documents and prepared them?
The only suggestion I had was is that we had vegetables in here, I guess only vegetables, and we were asked to add in flowers to be permitted to be grown in the garden. I have drawn this not as a lease that, because technically, even though we could recite a minimum consideration, it seemed most appropriate to me to make this a permission agreement for community garden plots. It renews itself year after year, but it does leave the city reserving the right to withdraw or terminate any of these plots upon giving notice, and so it's, it should accomplish what the community garden folks want, and it should also leave the city with enough control in the event that we do need to take a plot back. It does have an appearance, if you're all ready, it has an appearance control in it, so, you know, if anyone has suggestions, that's fine, but this would only need authority for the mayor to enter into this agreement. It doesn't require a resolution or ordinance the way I have drawn it.
The only thing I have to say about it is that some of those, we have water to all those areas that they want. I wasn't sure, too sure about that. If there's water available in all those areas that they want, I don't know if we're going to.
It's my understanding that there is water available. The new garden, you know, new park at the turn of Maple has water. The only one I'm unsure of is the plot that the independent living is going to put a greenhouse on. But I do understand that the one that's out by the housing authority has water adjacent to the ground, so I believe we, I believe we're covered that way.
Then if not, it'll be up to you guys to get a water meter set. Yeah.
Motion to approve, mayor going into contract with the garden, is it Garden Club or what is it?
The North Arkansas Partnership for Health Education.
With that organization.
Second. A motion in the second to approve the entering into contract with the, with NAFI on the garden plots. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Flashing lights at junior high school. Wade?
Yeah, this is more to let you guys know what's going on. We're having trouble with those. Sometimes they don't work in the mornings when they're supposed to. Sometimes they'll start flashing at 3 o'clock on a Saturday afternoon. We're having trouble finding equipment to repair them. They're looking for it right now. They're about 20 years old, from what I'm told, those particular signals. The main reason I want you guys, if we can't find any, the parts we need to repair them, I'm just going to take the flashing signals down.
What would it cost to replace them?
Well, I have that in the budget for next year. We're looking at probably $8,000 to replace both of those. The reason that, the reason I'm going to go ahead and take them down is if they're not working when they should be, you know, people see them out there flashing at random times when they shouldn't, they lose their effectiveness. So, I just kind of give the council a heads up in case one day those come down and people start getting complaints about why those.
You had to replace them with a signage, some type of signage there.
They'll still have school zones, so we just won't have the flashing thing that's going with them. This, it's, it's an item we've been sort of fighting for the last little bit. Ralph Jones has been working on doing everything he can to try and get them to work. We reprogrammed them quite a bit, and they just, they won't hold the programming, which is why when we started putting together departmental budgets a few months ago, and I would include replacing those even then, I do have it in the budget that was handed out tonight to replace those next year.
That's a big safety item, huh? You go ahead and take care of it. You know, instead of just all of a sudden doing it till next year, I'd rather say you go ahead and get the lights fixed, period.
You go ahead and move forward. I'll have the hard price at the next council meeting.
Well, by the time we get them in and pay for them, it'll be paid out of next year's budget anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, don't, don't just say, well, we'll do them next year. I'd like for you to start them.
He just wanted to let you know he's going to disable the existing ones though, so, until we get the new ones installed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good to, you know, we weren't getting them ordered now, so.
Can we get them within 30 days or something like that?
I'd like to see. I don't, I don't know how quick we can get it.
Will State do any partial funding on this since it's a state highway? I'll ask at some point, but. The hard just tried.
Another thing I had is an additional discussion is road closure on Miller's Hardware property. The Necessity Avenue, I always assumed was a street that ran down in front of Miller Hardware, between Miller Hardware, between Edwards and Big Daddy's. It's not. Necessity Avenue is the alley between the building that burnt and the hardware store building. Miller's, Miller Hardware, because of vandalism and people driving up and down that alley and going back in there at night, and they own all the property all the way down that that alley serves, has asked for us to close what was known as Necessity Avenue.
Just from point A to point B.
Just in front of their business.
Behind their business. Someone's between their businesses, like, between the buildings.
Oh, the one in between the buildings. Oh, the one between the buildings.
And they want to close it from building to building, isn't that right?
From the, yeah, from the furniture store on down into their yard.
Something they want to close.
That goes on through, it goes on down past Martin's.
And Ben Martin doesn't care.
Martin's property, and he's not concerned.
Mayor, that will require...
An ordinance, right.
It will require some specific legal attention to get it into the council.
I'm sure that the mayor will provide a legal description, whatever else.
I think I can probably put it together, and if we can meet the advertising requirements, public requirements, we would try to get it in.
Is that a safety issue, really?
Well, we'll deal with him, it'll become basically a private drive at that point. We'll deal with him as far as access for us.
A gate with a lock that we've got a key for?
We'll do an octo box.
Yeah. But, yeah. That's something the fire department can deal with.
Yeah.
So Miller's is proposing to gate it off?
Yes.
Where public cannot have access after hours.
We have Dr. Edwards or the Ben Addings or anybody else.
Well, it doesn't serve Ben Addings because there's another street down there that...
Yeah, it's only the, it's like if you come up the back corner of the main building, it's just that one alleyway.
It's on the north side of the main building.
The only thing that I know of that's not owned by Miller's down there is a building that's owned by Ben Martin.
Right. And the people who do cut through there don't need to be cutting through there anyway because half the time they'll drop on top of somebody if they're, cut through there too fast. I mean, it's, it's a blind alley.
Yeah.
I think city and the west side of Tyler.
Well, that's...
That's across the street.
Yeah, across the street, yes.
No, that's Stevenson Street.
Yeah, alley doesn't serve that, so.
Well, no action tonight, really.
No, it would be premature to attempt it.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring it up before council and let the council know what we're trying to close and just see it.
I didn't realize that, did I?
The reason I knew it is Miller's address on all the building is number one, Necessity Avenue, and the reason it is that is the old hardware store, which was the furniture market there, was on that alley, which was Necessity Avenue.
And the Jaeger's. Frigidaire, Frigidaire.
Going way back. But I just wanted to bring that up and see if we can move forward on that, so.
That was before starting. Miller's used to be right out here at the end of range for the flood.
For the flood.
They moved down there and built that building, that one building.
So that's all I have for tonight. The council has?
One thing. You know, we discussed two different rates on trash service. I remember there was a low volume and a high volume. At the time, we didn't think it would need to be addressed because we were hoping for the tax, it wouldn't be a burden on the taxpayer, but have we done anything, or can we do anything to let everybody know we do have a low-volume service that they could qualify for?
That's probably what a fucking hell.
We got a new water bill, I'm sure. Put it on there.
I think, I mean, I know we're getting like T minus 30 on the, getting started, they probably already ordered most of the containers, but I think we should make sure that everybody knows that service is available. And then we also talked about a low-volume ser, a really low-volume service that they were willing to look at, you know, where they did a bag service, you know, for the little old ladies that only had like one bag a week, one bag every two weeks. And they were, Inland was willing to look at that. I would ask that we look at that, but we also be cautious. When the council did that in the past, it's been years, but when they did it in the past, you'd have the landlord, his renter come in and buy one trash bag, just so they could get off the regular billing schedule. And the next thing you know, they're piling the backyard and the deck full of trash because they wanted to get out of paying for trash.
That's the reason they did, that's the reason last council, the council seven years ago didn't go that route because...
They dropped it.
They dropped it.
Couldn't, but I think you can make it manageable. I mean, I...
Didn't Inland figure that out, though, like after, you know, a month or so, they should be able to know?
We'll discuss with them and see, because on their system, they have little RF tags on all their dumpsters, all the poly carts, that actually monitor when they're dumped and where they're dumped, and so I think they could...
We have several little 80-year-old ladies, if you will, in town that...
But if you go into bags, they don't have it.
Right, but we can discuss that with Inland, maybe they've got RF tags. I know they do it for shoplifting in stores on bottles and stuff. They might have RF tags to put on bags. They would monitor that for them, but we can discuss it with them and see.
For the reasons that you mentioned about people that try one bag, we have to be real careful.
I mean, I, I remember, I mean, I know it's been several, eight years ago, but I remember the situation, and it was, it was ugly. A lot of people that got for trash service and trash was not being disposed of properly. So if we could look at that, I'd appreciate it, and if we could address to our customers the fact that, to our citizens, if you will, the fact that we have it available. Now, they take over when?
January 1.
January 1.
Where's the recycling center?
It will be at UNFI.
There's a bunch of dump trucks and everything else that's there right now.
Yeah, it's no longer UNFI, it's Winkler Logistics.
Winkler Logistics. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anybody have anything else on the council? Anybody in the audience?
Good question. Don't they offer smaller containers?
That was what I was getting at. I don't know that the public knows that there was two different options, and I think we should get that word out there. It wasn't as big a deal to advertise that at first because we were praying the tax would pass. It didn't, so therefore, we need to make sure the public knows there's a 64-gallon polycart option.
65 is a normal size. It fills down to 35.
Okay. There's a smaller container, it's, yeah, it's not a dramatic difference in price, but it, I mean, it's worth looking at.
They do all different sizes of...
Two, 65 and 35.
And then another thing that we talked about that wasn't in the bid process was they would let us offer some kind of one-bag solution for the little old ladies, little old men that live by themselves, don't need, you know, a massive volume of trash.
We'll visit them. Brett?
I was curious, I noticed that glass is not being recycled by now.
That's because of the people possibly being cut on the routes with broken glass in those containers. They will take glass at the recycling center.
Okay, well, that's not quite here now.
Yes, and it will be provided in some information flyers that are going out when everything they'll take, what they'll take, how they'll take it, the fact that you don't have to sort it, you just have to put it in your polycart. That'll all be going out with some informations that are, flyers that are delivered with the polycarts, I believe.
It is going to stay in there that this, in the polycarts has to be bagged.
I believe so, yes. That's my understanding so far. Because what will happen if it's not bagged is when they go to dump it with that one-armed truck, when they get it up in the air and it starts spilling out, it'll blow all over the street. So it will have to be bagged in the polycarts.
And it's going to be...
It'll be spelled out in the brochures, and those should start being delivered, I think he said the second week of December?
It's pretty quick.
First or second week of December, yeah.
And the trash cans are going to be blue and gold? Gold gobs?
Trying to remember, they'll be, they are.
They'll be blue, and I think one will have a green lid, one will have a yellow lid.
Yeah.
We can't have them all gobbling.
But anyway, they should start delivering them pretty quick, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Did you settle on when you're going to meet next month?
No. We're holding our regular meeting on the 27th.
Regular meeting, the, since they call it special.
Motion to adjourn the second, all in favor?
Aye.
This program is brought to you as a public service of KTKO Channel 8.